Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, September 11, 2017. We're going to do it just a little bit different today, so hang on, hang with me. You can stand, though, and I'd like to ask Chief Tim Collins and Chief Kevin Sullivan to come up to the -- make sure the -- to come to the front.
Don't mind, thank you. So today is September 11, 2017, the 16-year anniversary of September 11, '21, a day that none of us will forget and none of us can ever forget. It was a day that changed our country forever and, I think, changed our own personal sense of security and safety forever as well. As we remember 9/11, one of the images that is seared in my head is the images of the brave first responders, the firefighters and the police officers, who, when your human instinct would be to flee danger, ran into danger in New York to help save lives and at the same time risked and lost their own lives. I think one of the things that's important for us all to remember as we pause today and remember September 11 is our first responders that are still with us and serving. There are brave men and women in uniform that continue to serve here in Ferndale and across the country with bravery and courage every day, ready for the next event that we, God help us, hope never comes. But one of the things we do know, we don't know if it'll come, but one of the things we do know is that if it does, the first responders will be there to protect us. And so today, as we remember September 11, I want to honor and recognize all the men in uniform, and I appreciate both of the chiefs here who represent our men and women in uniform on this day. So I would like to ask them to join me in leading the pledge of allegiance, and then we'll follow that with a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you, chief. Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Here.
Pollocka?
Here.
Piana?
Here.
Leaks May?
Here.
Mayor Coulter?
Here, thank you. We have a quorum this evening. The next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
A move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
My only question is, when you say "as presented," when was this agenda presented? Because we've had some changes.
Yeah, we did make some changes.
So do we need to change?
Olivia, I can amend my proposal. I move that we accept the agenda as previously posted but as presented today with the additions of Item 7H, approval of the service agreement with Opus International; 7I, approval of designate Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Leaks May as voting delegates to MML; and G, is that the one we added?
The last one, yep.
Yeah, and G. 7G, approval of the proposed bid recommendation to allow GM &amp; Sons to install decorative concrete walling.
All right, and so is that a friendly amendment? Who, you seconded that?
Yes.
Councilman Pollocka?
I accepted an amendment.
It's been moved by Councilman Martin and supported by Councilman Pollocka. Any discussion on the agenda this evening? All right, Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Moving on now to presentations, and we have two presentations this evening, and the first presentation is from our superintendent of Ferndale Public Schools. There she is, yes. Good evening, good to see you.
Can I approach?
Yes, absolutely. That's why we opened it up, so we would be a little more welcoming. Thank you.
So I just wanted to stop by today and tell you what a fabulous start we had to our school year. That's one, I want to thank the staff, the community, the school board, really for a great start to this school year. Just want to share kind of some things that we're working on at the start of the year and just keep you up to date with what's going on at Ferndale. One thing that we're really proud of is the first four days of school really focused on social and emotional learning and practice. Our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, Dina Rochelo, has really spearheaded focusing on the whole child and social, emotional. So the first week of school is about establishing relationships, ensuring the social and emotional welfare of our students. The research shows that when you do this, you're more likely to see results and achievements. So we're kind of laying the groundwork to getting to know our students, to ensuring that we have a successful year for all kids. One addition this year to our classes is Impact Hour, which is at the middle school and at the high school level, where it's 30 minutes daily, and it's in addition to all of their other courses that they take on a six-period day, but it focuses on building a school family, brain states, growth mindset, executive function, mindfulness, character and values. So a lot of times, my previous experience prior to education was I worked at Ford Motor Company, and engineers, say the least, lacked some soft skills, you know, when working with them. Not all, I hope the city engineers are here, but, you know, so some of those, some of those soft skills are very important for our kids to have, and we've made time. It's also a way that the teachers can work with kids who might be struggling and have that connection with the same teacher all year, so really a great, a great addition. Each week, we have our weekly character quote for our students to focus in on what our goals are for this school year. For our first week, it was "Make Your Mark," and basically we asked students how they'd make their mark within the school community. This week says, "You have brains in your head, you have feet in your shoes, you can sear yourself in any direction you choose," which is from Dr. Seuss. So a lot going in terms of curriculum instruction. For as far as facilities, we're very grateful to the community for passing a sinking fund, which affords us about $800,000 a year in making improvements to our facilities. We also have an energy bond where we'll see 7,000 of our fixtures go to LED and so that we can have a more efficient school system. Also, it's addressing a lot of the mechanical system issues so that we can control the heating and cooling for our students a little bit better. We've also made renovations at each of the buildings, and I've highlighted some of those for you to see, but each year you're going to see more and more renovations within the buildings to improve upon our already great facilities. Some upcoming dates I just want you to be aware of, every school is focused on offering a curriculum night and open house so that parents can come in and see what the classroom looks like, what will be the curricular focus. So again, our open house at UHS is September 12. Our curriculum night at the high school and middle schools this week on September 14 from 6:30 to 8:30, and of course, we invite everybody to our board meetings. Our regular board meeting is September 18 at 7:00 PM. Again, we had a great, great kickoff to the beginning of the school year. We're going to rely on the Ferndale community to continue to help us make Ferndale Public Schools continue to improve and be great for the citizens that we serve, so I thank you for your time tonight.
Anybody? Thank you, doctor, and does anyone have any questions?
I do through the chair. Forgive me, I should know this, but what is "fuel"? Is that the university?
I'm sorry, that's upper elementary.
Upper elementary, okay.
Formerly Kennedy.
Got it, thank you.
No problem.
I know.
Acronyms for our acronyms.
I know, right. Thank you so much for being here, we really appreciate it. And our second presentation is another leader in our community and a relatively new leader in this role, and that is our Director of the Ferndale Area District Library. Good evening.
Hello, how are you?
Wonderful.
So I wanted to come in and talk to you about our big announcement, which is beginning October 1st. We're going to be open on Sundays now at the library. This is one of the, probably the number-one promise we made with the new village for this year, and last year we added in Fridays, so now we're just very thrilled to be able to offer seven-day-a-week service for the communities. Our hours are going to be 12 to 5 on Sunday, which is the same as they are on Saturday, just to make things less confusing, so we're excited to be able to add that in. In preparation for that, we've been hiring more staff over the summer because it takes a while to get people trained and up to speed. We've also been doing that with an eye not only for staffing those hours, but to be able to expand our programs and services at the library. In addition to that, we, you know, it's time to upgrade our computers and some of the, you know, the space planning in the library, just to further enhance the experience for library visitors when they come in. One of the other things we've kind of gone with, we've not had a lot of teen programming as of late, so we hired a new librarian who, that's kind of her focus, and we're already adding in what they're calling "free time Fridays," it's kind of an open activity time for the teens to come in, so to give them something to do after school, and we'll see how that goes, maybe we can expand that out. We have a lot of book clubs for elementary and middle schoolers, we're now adding in a high school book club to kind of give, just more teen programming, you know, for the kids after school. We're committed to our partnership with the Ferndale Public Schools, we're really looking forward to working with Dr. Bazey, and she's told me she has a lot of ideas, so we're excited to kind of hear how that goes. For those of you that don't know, some of the things we're already doing with our, with the schools, our librarians go over there once a week, and we've kind of worked on things like getting the kids library cards and bringing books over to them so they can pick out, you know, from the things we bring, you know, check them out. We've also been working with the teachers for curriculum support, so quite a few of them will send us an email like, "Hey, we're doing this topic, can you bring like 30 books over?" So we've been working with that, and we're hoping to get more of the teachers involved with that so that we can help them out. Our librarians go to the curriculum nights at the school to better interface and kind of find out what they need and how we can help. One of the other things that we've expanded just this summer, I hired a new librarian, and part of her schedule is dedicated to working over at the upper elementary school. She had been a volunteer there for a while, she's one of the parents as well, and finally we sat down and were like, you know, let's just make this official, so every week she goes over. I went over with her a couple afternoons before school started just because I'm new to this area and wanted to see what it looked like, and we spent a lot of time moving the bookshelves around, getting the books kind of ready to go and organized, so we're really excited to be able to help with that. The lower elementary has already asked if maybe we could help them out, too, so we'll kind of see, but we're just so happy to be able to go over and give that kind of support to the schools, so. Some of the new initiatives we're hoping to work with the school on this year, we've been talking about a lunch-and-learn program to kind of, to bring over to the schools, and the PTA has been wanting to do a Battle of the Books for a while, which is basically like tournament quiz bowl. So, you know, there's a signed number of books, and then there's like a tournament with questions, and it's a lot of fun, so we're hoping we can get that rolled off this year. Some of our programs at the library, we're going to be expanding our first top Fridays to a monthly program before we did it every other month, and basically what that is, is it's Friday nights at 8:00 PM, so we're hoping to catch people after dinner but before they are out for the evening at some of the local restaurants, so we're going to have live music acts and other things to kind of bridge that gap downtown, so. Normally, the library closes at 6:00, so we'll be opening up just for that. It'll be on the first Mondays of the month at 8:00 PM. Our first one is October 6, and we're bringing in the River Street Anthology, which is a program with the Archive of Michigan. What they've been doing is going around the state and recording Michigan musicians and get in and archiving those, so it's kind of our own record of music in Michigan that, you know, for posterity, and so they're going to come and give a program on that, which should be just fascinating. We're continuing our partnership with the city. We've been doing the Storytimes in the park with the Parks and Recs Department, which I think have been a lot of fun during the summer. We worked with Special Events and the DPW to provide the internet access for TV7 for the Dream Cruise. I got some great pictures from the roof of the Dream Cruise, which was a lot of fun, but basically they had to have their broadcast antenna up on our roof hooked in with our internet so that they could better stream the video during the Dream Cruise, so. Something new we tried, we had a really, really long ethernet cable that we stretched across, but we figured it out, it worked out well. September 28, at 6:30, we're hosting the Be Smart for Kids program, which is on gun safety, and the Ferndale Police Department will be there to answer questions and to hand out gun locks there, so we're excited to have them come in. Last Sunday, September 24, from 12 to 2, we're going to have an open house, kind of as a little preview before we open on Sundays. The DIY and the art fair are going on that weekend, so we were thinking we would just attract people that are wandering around for that. We'll have snacks and water and restrooms, so if you want to stop in and say hi, we've got information on what kind of plans we're going to have for the year, so hopefully people just kind of wander in as they're out and about, so, but we'll be there.
Wow, lots of fun and activities. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question and a comment, if I may. The first comment is, I was going to include this in my call to council at the end, but I'll mention it now, it seems more appropriate. You're also hosting the History and Mystery on the 14th, correct?
Yes, we are.
With Don Levin, who's a local author. He came and talked about that at a previous council meeting, so that's at 6:30. Really kind of a cool thing, local author murder mystery set in Ferndale.
Yeah, we're partnering with the Historical Society.
Correct, and it's partnered with the Historical Society. They're going to look at the Great Fire in Ferndale, and just kind of a neat event. And then secondly, is more of a question, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, so you don't have to answer it here, but I would very much welcome future dialogue. I think the partnership with the school district is fantastic. Let's talk about how we can partner with the city.
Okay.
Too, and I don't know what that looks like, but I think sitting around, thinking about it, being creative, giving April more work and Joe more work is, I'm kidding, but no, really, whatever opportunities we have to, we have the same constituency to a great degree, so.
Yeah, and April and I have talked before about that, and I've been kind of working with different supervisors from departments as ideas come up, so I think we're pretty open about the, Mayor Pro Tem, Piana and I were talking about a grant that we would like to apply for, you know, that we could use for some outdoor enhancements to the courtyard there, too, so, you know, I think the dialogue has started, which we're really excited about it. I mean, there's so many places where we overlap, and, you know, it can only be enhanced by us working together, so, yeah, we're excited for that.
Great, thank you.
I mean, I just want to react to that and say, one of the things that was clear in your presentation and Dr. Bazey in yours is the collaboration and the partnerships that are already going on, and I do feel like we're at a point in our community where we're all sort of rowing in the same direction, and that hasn't always been the case, and it's not always easy to do, and we all have separate missions, so it doesn't mean that we're all, we're never going to bump into each other, but it is good to hear the collaboration and the common direction that so many groups are headed in, so thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, thank you. All right, that's our only two presentations this evening, and so the next item of business would be called "Audience," and that would be your opportunity, if you're here, joining us in person, because you've got to be here in person, you know, every time I say that, I think, we should let people like tweet in questions or something. We'll get really modern, but for now, you have to be here in person. But if there is anyone here, Kara's looking at me like, shut up.
We could Skype them in.
I might Skype. Is there anyone that would like to address council this evening? All right, see, we could have had some tweets. All right, so. No call to audience this evening, so then we'll move on to the consent agenda, and consent agenda items are items that council considers routine and we enact in one motion, unless council wants to remove something from the consent agenda, so let me read that for you now. Oh, thank you, Greg. Item A is the approval of the regular and special meeting minutes of August 28, 2017. Item B is the approval of the Davy Resource Group proposal of $15,000 to perform arborist and urban forester services, and that the DPW director be authorized to sign the agreement letter contingent upon the city attorney approval of the insurance expense to be charged to the general fund contractual services account listed in the agenda. Item C is the approval of the proposed amended brownfield plan for the Iron Ridge Development Project, which shall be formally reviewed by the Oakland County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority in accordance with the terms of City Council's May 22, 2017 Resolution authorizing said review. Item D is the adoption of a resolution opposing President Trump's decision to suspend the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals program. Item E is the adoption of a proclamation celebrating September 17 grand opening of Jewish Ferndale. Item F is the approval of the text amendment recommendation provided for Section 18-205 of the Code of Ordinances regulating the fee schedule for the auto parking fund. Item G is the approval of the proposed bid recommendation to allow GM &amp; Sons to install the decorative concrete walking paths at Harding Park, which is located at 1075 Mapledale. Item H is the approval of the service agreement with Opus International for $13,500 for the 2017 pedestrian and bicyclist facilities assessment to be signed by the mayor and to be paid for from the account listed in the agenda. Item I is the approval to designate Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Piana, and Councilmember Leaks May as voting delegates to the Michigan Municipally Convention on September 12 to the 15, 2017, in Holland, Michigan. And finally, item J is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office and subject to review by the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support. By Leaks May and supported by Pollocka. Now, any comments or discussion on the agenda?
Through the chair, I'd like to read Item D, the adoption for a resolution opposing DACA.
Please do.
All right, this is a resolution expressing the city of Ferndale's opposition to President Donald J. Trump's decision to suspend the immigration program known as the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals. At the March 27, 2017, regular council meeting, the Ferndale City Council adopted a resolution affirming its status as a welcoming city. The welcoming Ferndale initiative aims to bring cooperation, respect and compassion among all in our city, including immigrants and non-immigrants alike. Endeavor, bless you, endeavors to create an atmosphere in which the immigrants and refugees have increased opportunities to integrate into the social fabric of their adopted hometowns and seeks to embrace diversity while supporting and retaining unique cultural identities. By joining the National Welcoming Cities and Counties Initiative, the city of Ferndale commits to institutionalizing welcoming efforts through the adoption of policies and/or practices that promote inclusion with local government and the broader community. President Trump's decision to suspend the Deferred Action of Childhood Arrivals is contrary to the Welcoming City Initiative, and the DACA program, which currently protects nearly 800,000 undocumented immigrants from deportation, is a program President Barack Obama created to allow immigrants brought to the United States as children to remain in the country. And the DACA program grants two years, two-year stays and work permits to undocumented immigrants brought to the United States before their 16th birthday who have attended school or joined the military and have not committed any serious crimes. And children who are brought into the United States do not have the ability to make a decision about where they live while they are children because they go where their parents take them, and many undocumented immigrants who were brought to the United States as children have become tax-paying adults and productive members of society who have families of their own and contribute to society. And many people who arrived in the United States as children do not know any other home or have any place to return to if they were forced to face deportation, and their families would be ripped apart. And more, the 97% of the people who are brought into the United States as children are in school or working, and 5% are entrepreneurs who have started their own business, and now therefore be it resolved at Ferndale City Council that the city of Ferndale opposes President Donald J. Trump's decision to suspend the immigration program known as the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals, DACA, and be it further resolved that the city clerk shall send copies of this resolution to the President of the United States, our Michigan representatives and senators, senators, and the heads of all the appropriate federal agencies, the Governor of Michigan, the Oakland County Board of Commissioners, and the Oakland County Executive.
Thank you, Councilman. Other comments or questions on the consent agenda?
I do have a comment regarding the DACA. I just appreciate Councilman Martin for bringing this to the forefront and for council and the city to consider accepting this tonight, as I know a family that will be greatly affected by this, so I really appreciate us being open and bringing it forward.
Thank you, and I think it's time to be vocal, it's not time to be silent about these things, so I appreciate this body's willingness to recommend it.
Yes.
I would only add a comment about one of the other items. One of them was a proclamation celebrating the grand opening of Jewish Ferndale. I'm not going to read that, only because I'm going to be at the grand opening, I'm going to read it there, so if you want to hear it, you have to come, but I want you all to know that you're all welcome to come, and it's this Sunday. you all to know that you're all welcome to come, and it's this Sunday at 3 o'clock at the Jewish Ferndale Community Center, which is on Pine Crest just south of Nine Mile Road, and I know that the rabbi would welcome anyone who would like to stop in and see what they've got going on, some great programming and some great stuff at Jewish Ferndale, so congratulations to Jewish Ferndale. All right, if there's no other comments or questions, Barb, would you call the role on the consent agenda, please?
Councilmembers Piana.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, the consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda, and I believe we just have one item this evening, is that correct?
Yes.
That is the consideration of the purchase of a Case 590 SN backhoe, and this is going to the DPW department. If we buy this, right? What are you going to use a backhoe for? Except if I didn't know. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. During the 2017-2018 budget process, funding was approved to replace a 1988 Ford backhoe, capital improvement plan ID number 0122.
Getting your use out of that one, right? 1988?
Yeah. We need to make a modification, it was coming out of the wrong fund.
Oh.
Lloyd just pointed it out to me a little bit ago. It should be coming out of, not what's on the sheet, but it should be coming out of the Waterfund Capital 592-000977.
All right. Excellent.
In the city of Ferndale Strategic Plan, the replacement machine would also fall under supporting, fall under supported infrastructure due to the type of work it will be associated with throughout the community. The Department of Public Works recommends that council approves the purchase of a Case 590 SN backhoe, and with that approval, we should take delivery shortly after January 1st, 2018. Machine has to be built. As a member of National Joint Powers Alliance, the city can purchase the Case 590 SN with associated equipment for $115,968.09 after a trade-in credit of $6,000 for the existing backhoe that we own.
In case you wondered what a 30-year-old backhoe was worth, $6,000.
So we pay for it.
I can only imagine.
How about we $6,000?
And this doesn't go through a bidding process because we go through this consortium, is that right, which is?
You're getting a good deal.
That's good already.
Yeah, all right. Are there any questions? Comments? Or, well, a motion would be in order, I guess, let's start with that.
I move to approve the purchase of Case 590 SN backhoe from Southeastern Equipment Company at the cost of $24,537.90 annually over five years, and that the expense be charged to the General Fund Police Service Department on the account identified.
Support.
All right, moved by Piana, supported by Martin. Now, comments or questions?
I think, I think any piece of equipment purchased when over half of this council was in high school is worthy of replacement.
Well, it's in line with our capital improvement plan. We've already talked about this, so this is perfunctory, this has been in the process of purchasing, so that DPW can do their job.
I guess I would like to ask, how was this piece of equipment, this particular piece of equipment identified as being the best for us?
What is the best backhoe? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Well, we actually demoed several different models and got the opinion of a lot of the folks, a lot of employees at the yard, and this is the one that came back to us with the highest rating.
Okay.
It worked for us really well.
Good answer. Great.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Did you want to be part of that demo?
I would love to.
I know, right?
We've got a backhoe, we've got a fire truck.
What kid wouldn't want to drive around a backhoe?
I know, kind of see you as holding out for a hero and playing chicken with it. Totally a movie reference, but it's come a long time ago.
Through the chair.
Yes, we do.
As I understand it, this is proposed to be financed, and so the actual financing documents associated with the transaction are not yet before council, and so council may wish to consider amending it to also authorize the mayor to execute the financing documents, because it's likely that those will be coming in, or the alternative will be to have to consider the financing documents once they're received.
Well, it would make sense to do that with your review of that.
That's right. That would be a possible amendment.
So, Councilwoman, if you would, if you would be open to that modification?
I would be open to that modification, but I believe we have to actually sort of approve that amendment, right?
I think it has to be offered, so I'll offer a friendly amendment that we approve the financing, or that we authorize the mayor to execute the financing pending review by the city attorney, and then we'd have to vote on the amendment.
So is there support for that amendment?
I support on the amendment language.
All right, is there any discussion on that?
Good, thanks.
All right, Barb, would you call the role on the amendment?
Yes. Councilmember Polika.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. Now, back on the original motion to purchase the backhoe. Any further discussion or comments? All right, Barb, would you call the role on that?
Let's see, let's start with Councilmember Leaks May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, that is adopted. Thank you, sir.
Very much.
Good job. That concludes our regular agenda item, so the next thing on the agenda would be call to council, and so Chief Collins, anything from the police department for the good of the community?
Nothing further than to say hi to the community.
All right, thank you.
Actually, on behalf of the police department, we just hit the MML review today for the early college program, so that will be online and probably in the next couple of weeks, but we were able to showcase the early college program to all the communities in Michigan, and a big shout out to Chief Collins, probably doesn't even know it was in there yet today, about this awesome program that has been such a big part of our organization for the last couple of years. So as soon as I get that online, I will forward it to you guys. You probably already have the magazine in your mailbox, but.
Oh, good.
So, again, congratulations to the chief and Kara for writing the article.
Marina, anything for the Recreation Department this evening?
Good evening. Just two events that we have coming up. Again, of course, our big Ferndale Fall Fest will be held on October 7th, which is a Saturday from 11 to 3 p.m. at Martin Road Park, and also, we're partnering with the Ferndale Library on an event tomorrow where we'll be having reading in the park at Harding Park, and immediately following, we'll be having stroller fitness class. So both of those comboed together, so that'll be at 2 o'clock p.m. If anybody's interested in joining us, bring your baby in the stroller.
Excellent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Does it have to be a baby? Okay, thanks. Jordan, anything from Community and Economic Development this evening?
Just a quick announcement that our sustainability planner started today. Erin Cotel joins us from OHM Advisors, and she's really hit the ground running, so I'll be, she couldn't be here tonight, but I'll be bringing her by at the next council meeting to kind of give you an introduction, get her a chance to meet you in person, but you'll be looking to hear more from her, and she'll be at the next FESC meeting in October, so just really excited to have her, and with that, the CED team is fully loaded up.
Yes, awesome, great. Chief Sullivan, anything else from the, or anything from the Fire Department this evening?
Nothing.
All right, Cheryl in the Finance Department?
$28,766 is how much we paid for the backhoe in 1918.
Say it again?
$28,766.
Twenty?
$28,766.
Twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-six. So there's the inflation, 30 years of inflation for a backhoe. Awesome, you're good, thank you. That's awesome. Kara, anything from Community Engagement and Communications? All right. Lloyd, how about anything from DPW this evening?
It's from Beth brought you by dogs.
Just a, just a quick comment. Council earlier approved the Davy Tree for arborist service for the city. Many of our ordinances, as well as initiatives under our strategic plan, involve the city's urban tree canopy. The services of Davy Tree will be expanded even beyond what's in the, in our ordinances in that it will allow us to achieve some of those strategic objectives, such as, actually, when I looked at that, the immediate initiative that came to mind or objective was the healthy and connected neighborhoods, but with trees, and, you know, the more that we learn about our urban tree canopy, we find out that it also has economic benefits, as well as benefits to our infrastructure because of the advantages for stormwater. So this will allow us to really begin emphasizing and devoting time to expand our services not only in the public right-of-way and in parks, but onto private property to provide advice on tree care, proper tree in the proper place, and other activities that center around our strategic objectives. So I look, really look forward to bringing back before council in short order revisions to our ordinances that will impact our urban tree canopy and provide an extended life of our canopy and management, proper management of the tree canopy.
Thank you, Lloyd, appreciate that.
Actually, through the chair, Lloyd.
Yeah.
Can you just give, just an update as far as the Pine Crest paving, is it?
Paving, paving was complete this Saturday and Sunday, including the approaches from the side roads. We still have to do some striping. We did, we normally would not allow on Saturday and Sunday work to occur, but because of the school and the coronation that took place and getting late into the season, we did allow the contractor to work on Saturday and Sunday, and so the project is, in fact, surprisingly, we typically get some comments about road construction, you know, both positive and negative, but the one thing that surprised me is that Monday morning, we had several phone calls this morning, just complimenting the project, happy to see it open, happy with the way that it looks, and just before council, I was out actually reviewing some pay estimates for the project, and I think it's come together really well. It's open, and anything else that we do out there should be done under traffic, so there'll be no more interruptions.
Great. I've heard a number of compliments as well, so great job on that, it was long overdue and appreciated, I've ridden my bike on it, and it's smooth as can be.
I had a follow-up question. We have 19 streets under our repaving program, and some folks who've gotten a letter saying that their street was going to repave have not received any storm drain repairs or anything yet, so can you give an update on the rest of the streets that are still slated for repaving, but the residents are waiting, particularly like Flowerdale?
Yes, the contractor initially had thought that it would be okay to go in and do some storm work ahead of the paving. The problem with that is that there'd be a significant gap when the road was under construction that no activity occurred. I didn't think that would be, you know, in the best interest, and so the schedule was realigned so that the paving work will come immediately after the storm work. Farmdale and the streets in that area will be anticipated to be sometime, probably by October, we'll have those under construction.
Okay, well, I think it would be helpful to have an update to the residents of somehow, because the letter they received saying that they were going to start the work by the end of summer, and now we're into fall, and so they're wondering if they've been neglected, and wonder if they're even going to get the street repaving. So that's what I'm hearing from the residents who were notified, and now they don't think it's happening.
Okay. Thanks, Floyd. Joe, anything from the Assistant City Manager's Office this evening?
Yes, this evening, I am also wearing a special events hat, so I'm here to make an announcement on behalf of Michael Larry, who's out this evening, but next weekend, the DIY Street Fair is returning along with the Funky Ferndale Art Fair, and that will cause a couple of street closures that I wanted to make an announcement about in advance. I'm looking at a schedule, and on East Nine Mile, we will have a closure from Woodward to Leland on Friday from September 22nd. We will reopen on Monday morning, September 25th at 7 a.m. And East Troy Street between Woodward and Falvey, that will be closed along the library lot, around the brick wall, and it will also reopen on Monday morning at September 25th at 8:00 in the morning. The parking lot closures will be contained to just the library parking lot, and the Falvey lot, which is the lot located, the city lot located behind the web, the city hall municipal lot will remain open to traffic. We have asked for public parking, do staff additional enforcement officers alongside East Nine Mile to help guide traffic. We do understand that wayfind, it can be a challenge, so we'll be helping traffic vehicles move along through East Nine Mile, routing them, and we'll also be enforcing the RPZ neighborhoods. Just a reminder, it is not free to park in the neighborhoods, it is permitted-only parking, and we will be signing that as we have been doing for the events as well, so we will have an enforcement presence out there as well.
If I may, through the chair, you said that we'll be routing traffic flow to other parking locations, routing them to where? Like, what are the alternative parking solutions?
Well, one, one of the biggest purposes is to route them through the street closures, right? So you have a lot of out-of-town guests who don't know how to necessarily navigate the East Nine Mile street closures.
Sure.
So we, we help, help them connect to Woodward through the Vester Street closure, which is what they're there to do, but we also try to communicate to them the other options along West Breckenridge and Withington and all the other outer lots that are available that they may not know about, so.
Okay.
We try to communicate that, yep.
Through the chair, do you by chance know the hours of the DIY fair, just so that we can let the residents know that it will be from such-and-such time to such-and-such time, and maybe they can prepare for that?
Channeling my inner Michael Larry, my Kara Sokolwood, maybe?
Yes.
Thank you, Communications Director.
Yeah, but come on up so everyone can.
With the assist.
Yes, teamwork.
Together, we can do it, Michael.
Teamwork, dream work.
That's right.
We will also be issuing an alert on theparkferndale.com for all the updates to the parking system.
Okay, so they're actually separate hours this year, so DIY Festival, they're all Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. DIY is Friday, 6 p.m. to midnight, Saturday, 11 a.m. to midnight, and Sunday, 11 a.m. to 11 p.m. And Funky Ferndale is Friday, 3 to 7 p.m., Saturday, 10 a.m. to 7 p.m., and Sunday, 11 a.m. to 6 p.m.
But the music stops for the DIY at 11 p.m.?
Um, midnight, Friday and Saturday, 11 p.m. Sunday.
Yeah.
An hour before?
It's going to be an issue.
Oh, it is 11?
Yeah, it's an hour before the event.
I lied, yes, the music stops an hour before.
An hour before the event, yes.
We're doing that application.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Kara. It does remind me, and I know we talked about this, and I forget exactly how we said we were going to approach it, but there have been some questions about the number of events, various things about the events, and that maybe, I know we have a special events committee, but maybe council wants an opportunity to just sort of have some input in that. How, how do you envision that happening?
We envisioned, well, we knew that we were coming into the closure of this event season with this weekend. Once we closed out this season, we wanted to reconvene the special events committee with city council to kind of have a workshop and to talk about how we might go about navigating some improvements to the process, the ordinance, and the policy moving forward.
Excellent. Chair, that would include our discussion on increasing recycling at the events, correct?
Yes.
All of that stuff.
It's going to be a holistic review of the policy and, and the ordinance as well.
Awesome, excellent, thank you. Thank you. Okay, that's it, Michael, Joe?
That's it. Michael Joden.
Barb, anything from the Clerk's office?
Just a quick reminder, the last day to register to vote for the November 7 election is October 10, and you can get applications online or at city hall.
Thank you. April?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Anything, any HR things? We don't have Jenny.
We actually do have a posting for our customer service representative, it is still open and online, so we encourage anybody to take a look and see if they'd be interested in that position.
Customer service, excellent. Applications are closed for the HR Director, right? You've got lots of.
Yes, 185 applications.
Right. Woo! Yes, okay. Excellent, so a lot of hiring going on, and good stuff, and all of them on an application without the box, thanks to Councilwoman Leaks. So it's a beautiful thing. Dan, anything?
Nothing, Mike.
All right, Councilman Martin?
I'd just like to draw people's attention to next Wednesday, the 20th, is the next Planning Commission meeting, and that will be of interest to many people as it will be very heavy on parking deck design. Correct, it's the 20th?
Sure.
Thank you for the queue. Yes.
Whatever I can do to support you, Joe.
All the special events, let me put back my parking hat on. September 20th, we will be submitting a PUD application to the Planning Commission about the DOT, the development on Troy, so we, that will be a public hearing formally to But to the Councilman's point, yes, we will be just submitting an update to the site plan for the actual product, project. So this will be really the next major update that we've had for quite some time on the project.
Yeah, it's a big step in the process, so I'd encourage anyone interested to attend.
Absolutely.
Excellent. And what time is that again?
Starts at 6:00 p.m.
It's 3:00 to 6:00.
Six thirty.
Six.
Oh.
Six.
All right.
Double check, last time it was six.
All right, thank you. That's it.
Anything else? Okay, great. Councilwoman Leaks May?
Nothing, except I'm excited to be going to Holland, Michigan tomorrow for the MML Convention. Hopefully bring back lots of good ideas to share with the community. So I'm looking forward to going with Mayor Pro Tem Piana and collaborating and networking.
Wood and shoes.
Wood and shoes, minus the which. That's not really a thing. Councilman Polika?
Well, I have some sad news. I learned this afternoon that longtime resident Betty La Framboise passed away. She was 93. She lived in Ferndale for, I think, most of her life. I'm not sure she was born in Ferndale, but she has been here a long, long time and a very active person in the community. She was involved with the elections. She was a volunteer for the elections. And so my condolences to the family.
I think president of the block clubs for a while, back when those were really active, very involved. Yeah, it's sad news. Thank you. Anything else?
No, nothing else.
Councilwoman Piana?
Sure, I have two things. Just to build off of what Councilmember Leaks May said, heading to MML and look forward to learning a lot of things, but I also look forward to doing a joint panel with our city manager, April, on a topic that we've been asked to talk about, and it's called the Gender Balance Challenge. And we are talking about women representing over 50% of the state and local government workforce, but they quickly drop off to less than 20% at the chief executive level. And why does this occur, and why is it important to a city to address this issue? So we'll be talking about Ferndale's gender balance in terms of hiring, but also our inclusive- inclusiveness in terms of hiring, too. So I look forward to talking about Ferndale's story with some great panelists. I also just wanted to say that Helene Zach honored the city of Ferndale with a proclamation